All right, 6 o'clock. We're going to call the meeting to order. Review minutes from March 15th. Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March 15th.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion on the minutes from our...
That was a while ago because we've had three weeks.
Yeah. From our last meeting. Was there any discussion on that?
I don't think that I saw.
Minutes are good. Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, any adjustments to the agenda for tonight?
We don't have cemetery listed as a department update and Brent is here to talk about cemetery.
Okay.
So I don't know where to want to put them, so.
Well, I guess.
Put them at the top of the department list.
Okay.
Is that all right with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, you got that.
Well, you wanted to wait until we do department updates, okay? Let's do animal complaint, I guess. We'll start with that first.
How you doing? My name is Morris Douchain. Prior to the birding, I'm complying up. I hated to call you guys, but I went by your procedure. I called the dog catcher, not available, and I called each and I know you answered your phone. I apologize for calling at that hour in the morning. I called each and every one of you. Not one of you got back other than him. He called me on the phone. And going by procedure, we're...
So, we're actually in procedure, working on our procedures. We've had Dan's been sent out with Mark. Mark has talked to the homeowner and from what I understand for... Well, hold on a second. Hold on a second. From what I understand, the homeowner said that they were going to keep the dog in at night. Is the first step in that. We're still working on the rest of it. I don't know if the dog is registered at this point.
No.
So that'll be the next...that's the next step. As of May 1st, we sent out warnings for dogs that aren't registered and so on and so forth, and then we continue from there. What am I missing?
It's May 30th. May 30th, the warrant goes out.
May 30th.
Then the dogs can...
So we'll sign a warrant and then from then on, the dog will be picked up.
First, they're not the homeowner. They rent, right? We know that.
Okay, well...
Well, it is kind of. If one rented before. You know, the people that rent to them should be in the loop pretty heavily too.
To be quite honest with you, as a selectman on this issue, I'm not...we don't have all day to worry about fools involved and whatever. We're trying to deal with it.
Well, you know, it dragged out a long time. Been a long time.
Yeah, it's understandable that that's a frustration, but we, you know, we have dog ordinance to follow that process. You know, my question is where, you know...
More importantly, we have a state process that we have to follow.
Correct.
And we've not followed it for several years.
Okay.
So we need to do that in order to take care of this problem and many other problems that are involved with it. Just on our street alone, there's six unregistered, unlicensed dogs that haven't been registered or licensed for years. Now, by state law, those dogs shouldn't have been put out. We either made to get their licenses and registered and raid and shot it or put down, but they've never been given a warrant. So at some point, there's a disconnect.
Well, which we're going to start with. But again, we're part of...I mean, Dan, you've been to meetings before. We've covered...we just upgraded...we just did a huge upgrade on this whole procedure and policy last year. I mean, part of the responsibility that we've given to Mark that, you know, we're trying to help with is to exactly do what you're talking about is uphold, especially around dog registrations, to make sure that we're being compliant there. Because there's a lot of reasons, you know just as well as I do, there's a lot of reasons why we need to do that.
Yeah. My main concern, though, is the state. Because I talked with the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns, and when I explained to them what was going on, their response was you have a bigger problem than just that because there's a failure at the top down. When issues...when warrants are issued and things aren't followed through a lot, then more and more people just...why do we have to pay? Nobody else is.
Right.
And that's where we're at.
So as of this year, we have Mark...
We're going to change that.
Yes, we're going to change that. Mark.
I'm with you on that. I spoke with Michelle Boyer today. She's going to work with us. I spoke with Gane Warren. He is now the humane animal control officer in our area.
Okay.
So if there's a problem with an animal for whatever reason, not being fed or whatever, then he comes in. And he's not under the restrictions that some of us are. So we do have a plan in place. We've just got to follow through.
And so, and I'll tell you, Dan, and this goes with, especially with the dog ordinance. And I want to make sure that it's clear, like, yes, we've established this process, but part of it for us is we are adjudicators for this process.
Yes.
So as much as we can make sure that the right people within the municipality are doing what needs to be done, if a complaint is given to a resident and they want to appeal that to us, we have to remain unbiased to that so that we can adjudicate it properly.
That's right.
So I think the biggest concern is that I see is, is are we following...are we following the ordinance that we've got laid out?
My bigger concern is how we follow state laws.
Yeah, well, Dan, the state's not going to come in here and do anything. They leave it up to us.
That's right. We make what state we want.
To sheriff this, this whole procedure, so.
That's fine. I'm good. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
You know, I went on the state website, pretty simple, and I'm not a computer person. I got it figured out. You know, the first paragraph cuts and dries this whole thing. You know, "All dogs in the state of Vermont will be vaccinated." Period. That's what it said. The rules and regulations, the very first paragraph.
But who polices that in the state?
Doesn't matter.
Just saying. Who polices that?
Who polices what we're doing now?
The state.
So, I just have a quick question.
Yes.
As a resident and as a neighbor, did you go and talk to your neighbor about the dog problem?
No, because I've been sued by them.
So I don't understand. You have a problem with your neighbor and their dog barking all the time, but you didn't even go and check with them and say, "Hey, your dog's barking all the time."
I don't hear that.
I've had problems with my neighbors' and dogs, and I go see them.
I trust you.
But you're here, you're here pointing your fingers at us, saying, "We need to fix this problem," right?
You people, and I'm talking to you three. You represent...did I correct?
We represent the town.
I am from the town, Dan.
Absolutely, but we're...so we have a policy. We have a procedure. We're trying to...
When you're beginning to protect them, how do I get ahold of somebody? I called the last message.
I don't...
One of you got back to me. You did. You answered your phone.
You called me at 3:00 in the morning.
The dog was barking.
Probably not a good time to call me at 3:00 in the morning.
I can't help that. I called the dog catcher, not available. I called each and every one of you. You answered your phone.
Yeah, because I thought somebody's house was on fire or somebody got run over or something at 3:00 in the morning.
You know what? Give me a procedure number.
So, again, I'm going to point right back to the ordinance that we have put in place in the town. And it takes into consideration the state regulations, it's right here at the top, what the authority is for that. And absolutely, we've had a problem in the past with the fact that we haven't followed state specifications to make sure that dogs are licensed and vaccinated appropriately. We've taken action on that. We have...we have tasked Mark Puffer to manage that and make sure that that's enforced appropriately this year moving forward.
Okay.
When we hired...when we brought him on and appointed him as a constable, it was already after when all of that was done. He did a pretty dang good job, I think, last year when he did come in to make that happen. So what I will say is, is that's where it starts. We need to follow this process. And just as I said, that process, it's laid out because we can't be the ones...I can't go down based on our ordinance. I can't be the one that goes down there and deals with those dogs. Because if that complaint, if that complaint comes here to this select board, and I've done that, we've already violated our own ordinance. So we have to...you have to trust and follow the process that we've got so that if there is a complaint with a nuisance dog or a dog that has an issue with barking or other things that are against what the ordinance, the town ordinance is, which was, you know, we got this and updated it with VLCT, we have to follow that process. So, and, you know, I'll just say, I'm sorry that I didn't answer the phone if you tried to call me, but...
Oh, I didn't.
I'm in and around, and if you want my cell number, I'll give you my cell number if it comes up as an issue in the future, for sure.
Give a number I can get ahold of somebody.
Why is it our job to call us and to fix it?
Your dog catcher doesn't answer the phone. Where do I go with that?
Well, so then, again, I mean, if you want a copy of the dog ordinance for the town...
A whole copy. You definitely do.
I would say...
I did go and speak with them.
Okay.
And it may go different.
Okay. So nothing's changed, Mark? Talked to the owner. The owner said that they're going to keep the dog in at night, so on and so forth?
I do that all my time.
So the next question is, is, you know, where are the process? Are we...
We've been given a written warning.
Okay.
The next thing is a fine. Is that right, Karen?
Yep.
So, I mean...
That's where we need to go to, on a...
Okay.
So we have to stick right along, and if it gets to a point where, you know, obviously we need to, we need to follow the process so that we can...
Which is what we're working on.
When it gets to the point where it needs to be...
There's two dogs that haven't been registered and licensed for many years, so...
Yep.
And it's not the dog's fault.
No.
Okay? The dog's not a bad dog.
Yep.
It's bad parenting by the owners.
Okay. Well, we're going to do exactly what we say we're going to do, so.
And that's, I mean, again, that's, if Mark Puffer's in the loop on that, as a constable, he needs to follow, and I...
And he can't be here. He's out bringing a vehicle, but...
I trust that Mark's going to follow his, the ordinance and the process that we've got laid out so that, you know, it will be handled correctly. And that includes, like we've said, that includes, you know, licensing and vaccinations. You know, as it is right now, you know, I don't know if Mark's talked to them, but, you know, again, he should ask, have they been vaccinated?
He has spoken with them, and neither of the dogs have been registered or vaccinated.
So...
But you can't register the dog if it's not vaccinated.
Correct.
Right.
So, now, just like I said, give me a number to call so I don't go to town clerk all the time. You know, I don't know what other way to get ahold of me, but nobody answered their phone.
Well, I mean, you, if you do get ahold of one of us, there's nothing we can do for you.
Okay.
Right?
Just, I don't know.
I mean, we, like, we can't act. We can't go down there and speak to your neighbor.
I know, you know, when I'm on, when the dog's barking, you know, and I offered you to come down.
Well, why do I need to come down at 3:00 in the morning?
But that's...
What am I going to do? Well, I don't, I don't believe you the dog's barking. I believe you the dog's barking. What do you want me to do?
Man, you were a mile and a half away.
What do you want me to do at 3:00 in the morning?
To the death of it.
You can go as a neighbor and talk to your neighbor and say, "I'm sorry, I'm pissed your dog's barking." What do you want me to do?
I wanted you to come down just with me.
I have better things to do than come down and listen to a barking dog.
Again, I think the other, I think the important part of that is, is because of the way our dog ordinance, we can't come down there.
You can't come to my house and drive me in.
No, no, because, because we as a select board, when there, when a complaint is filed, if you file a complaint, the process is you file a complaint to the town clerk or the constable, and they come out, and it continues to be an issue. If we file a complaint and if we issue a fine and they want to appeal that, we are the adjudicating body for that. They come to us as a select board, and we as a select board have to vote on whether we, we accept that appeal and that fine gets overturned or that fine stays in place. But just like you can't call the judge up in Caledonia because people are speeding in town, right? That judge can't come down here. He has no authority to sit here and tell somebody that they're speeding. Because he's a judge, he's adjudicating the process. That's the way the process is laid out with this ordinance. We went through this with, with the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns, I think, last year, two years ago, September 21st, to make sure that this was put in place appropriately because the previous one was not, and we didn't have a solid process. So we laid that out specifically because we have to have checks and balances with that. So we can't come out as a select board and say, you know, "Yes, there's an issue," and we can't intervene. Because if we intervene, then we've, then we've interrupted this process, and the person that's getting the complaint doesn't have the due process that they're afforded under the government.
Hey, I will be in this contact.
Yep.
If that's...
Okay.
If that's fine.
That's fine.
Because I'm involved in it as much as anybody else. So I can be in this contact.
Okay, so...
You know, I understand your position now, all right? Got it. Still, you're going to have a dog catcher, constable. He needs to be able to get ahold of...right?
People don't, in the middle of the night when dogs barking aren't necessarily on call for dog issues.
I called on Sunday at 3:00 in the afternoon.
But people have lives, and people are busy. We're all busy. I'm sorry.
Obligation, because you put it on paper, right? You're a constable, right? Does crime or anything...
These aren't full-time positions. This is a volunteer-owned position. We don't have...
I can't help that.
We do the best we can.
This is what you got.
So we're, we're, we're doing what we can do. That's it.
That's all you can do.
That's all we can do.
We put the full authority of the Town of Groton's ordinance behind your case once. It doesn't feel like it to you, but we've done everything that we legally can to help you out in this.
Okay.
We can't do anything else more at this time.
What's those warrants and stuff?
When the next step comes and the next step comes, Dan is going to know. He's going to be right on top of it. We've done everything...no, it doesn't feel like it to you, but we've done absolutely everything we can as a select board and as a Town of Groton to help you out in this matter. I promise you that.
No, and it's not just me. I can't believe that people don't find this a problem. You know, people don't agree with me.
So we're, we're done with this discussion. We, we're doing, we're doing what we can do, okay? And we have a process, and we're going to work the process. Okay?
I guess so.
Thank you. Okay, so, Christmas tree discussion, which Mary was going to be here, but there's no Mary, so as far as I'm concerned, we don't have a Christmas tree.
I'd like to speak up.
But she's the one that had set up for the Christmas tree association, but...
So, I don't even know what the issue is.
Well, there's not an issue. Apparently, Mary, the community club would like to do something with the Christmas tree again, so on and so forth.
Okay.
Philip?
So I, I was originally involved in that and the tree being out of there, and I went and saw Mary, and we had a long talk about this tree and placement and all the rest of the stuff that went along with it. And I'll speak for Mary, and we agreed, there's no, that tree does not belong.
Okay.
That's the short and long of that. And, and I don't know if there's a file on, on that tree with a select board. I know that...
Well, we have the minutes and stuff here from the previous...
Did all that come before?
Yeah, so...
The only thing you don't have, I'm assuming...
But, but honestly, we don't need to waste a lot of time. There's, Mary's not here, and there's, officially, nothing is going on as far as the tree is concerned, so we don't need to spend any, you know, any time on this because there's no case.
When December comes up, we want to do this again. We want to stop it now.
Well, I don't know that there's anything to stop. You said you talked to Mary, and so...
So how can, how can we avoid this happening again next year?
I guess, I guess we don't need to avoid anything because I don't have anything...
I think it's like anything on any town property. If somebody wants to bring a proposal before the select board, we can vote whether we agree with it or not. I think that's what it comes down to. I, I think, you know, that the, from a safety perspective, where that tree was at previously that I recollect, it's not a good place to put something. It's going to obstruct you up and down the roadway. And, you know, I think that's where, for me, I think, you know, if, if the community club is interested in funding the placement of a Christmas tree in the Town of Groton, that we should look at alternative places. I'm not against putting a Christmas tree up. I mean, I know we've had one right out here in the yard for a number of years.
And the church does one. The church, they could do one down in the gazebo, and so there's... I'm not going to waste, you know, there's no sense of wasting a lot of time because we don't...
So this is almost over. Mary and I talked about that placement of the trees, and I think the bottom line here, it was brought about tree in the, in the common.
Yep.
That's done. Now, we did talk about other placements where it can go, but that's totally off. That's not the issue. The issue is Mary wanted the tree in the, in the common. So that's done.
Okay.
So as long as...
Well, we're the board, Philip, so we're, but we have the obligation to listen to people and whatever. We don't, we're not, we don't, everybody gets to present their, their thing. That's how it works.
Yeah, again, if it comes up in December and somebody brings it up, we'll, you know...
Deal with it then.
We'll address it then, too.
The real bad thing is, do I have to come back in December and present this again?
I'm not...
I'm going to have to keep this...
Why are you so concerned about the tree? It's about visibility.
Well, I think, I think, Philip...
Right?
Hessenberry Brown's 18.
Yeah, yes.
We haven't...
So I, I say, if one life is saved by that tree not being there, then that is worth it. It's worth not being there.
And I think, you know, with the notes that I, I mean, I looked over the minutes that we had, and I'm, you know, Philip, you and I have talked about it before. You know, I think, no matter what, if somebody brings it back up to the board, we'll address it the same way, that it's, you know, it's in the right way, it's a safety issue. That's how I feel about it. I think that's how the board felt about it in 18, and so I think that's, I mean, again, people can bring their stuff to the board if they want to, and, you know, we just have to...
That's fine.
...take any consideration, you know? So...
As long as you know I'm going to get them again.
Oh, we, we, absolutely, Philip.
Yep, so we're noted.
Okay, done. Okay. Update, cemetery.
I'm not good with this.
That remains to be seen.
Yeah. I'm a very committed man and organized, and I want to give this lady over here a special thank you for leading us where we're at. She checked on a bunch of different options, and we're going to be able to move perpetual care funds into a 4% CD.
Oh, okay, good.
Money on it.
That's good. I like this. I thought you were going to move the cemetery, but maybe not.
We may, but you guys are off the hook.
Okay.
So that's the good news. Nobody can come in and chew you guys out about cemetery.
This is excellent.
So I figure, give her some good news.
We should start some other committees, dog committee, all kinds of committees.
So I just want that your blessing to open up the CD.
Okay, so...
Doesn't need to be a motion. It just need, I just want approval to open up an additional account.
So, okay, so, so we, I, what's the discussion on this? How do we, this is all good?
It sounds like a good idea to me.
Okay, so we need a motion to open up a, what are we opening?
A CD for perpetual care.
CD.
Cemetery.
So, I don't have to repeat myself.
Just a second.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure I was the one to start it.
That's good.
Okay, discussion.
Um, one of those things that the cemetery commission wants to do it, and that's fine to me. If it's like the planning commission brings something to us and they all think it's a great idea, then that's probably a good idea.
No, I think it's, I think it's good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Brent, was that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Excellent. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just to let you know, you have no statutory responsibility for cemetery.
I know.
If somebody calls, somebody calls you to complain about the cemetery, you go, "Boh, boh, boh, boh."
Call Brent?
Yep.
Okay, good. I like that. So Highway, so I apologize, I printed out the updates. Did you guys, we didn't see the email?
I didn't see it.
Oh, and I guess I happened here. Hold on. And I left it right on the printer before that, which I talked to Harold.
What was it? Oh, he wants to start seeing him.
Yep, so I, he flagged me down today and said, "Would it be okay if they started hauling sand?" Because there's no point in putting sand out to bid because there's nobody else. We have Chief's Pit right down the road, and there's no other, so I should do some...
No, that's not true. We talked about it last year. He could truck all the way up to Lindenville if he wanted.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So, um, let me just look at it.
Based on the two hours I spent in Chief's Pit this weekend with Hunter Safety, the sand looks good to me.
Okay, hold on. I got to get to my email. Okay, so, hey, y'all. This is my update for Highway. I would like to haul our winter sand for next year, starting soon. I'm asking to not put it out to bid because there are only one local supplier, so, so on and so forth.[1534.12] because there are only one local supplier, so, so on and so forth. I am going to put the RFP out to suppliers for chloride for bid to be opened at the next select board meeting. We have been getting equipment ready for spring, summer work. Thanks Harold. So that's the update we have from Harold.
I, I didn't get a chance to, but since Philip's here, um, I don't know if anybody heard the news that there was a major gas spill at one of the town garages, Cavendish maybe?
Nope, I didn't.
They had a hundred, hundred plus gallons that was leaked into, so I just wanted to ask, I'll ask, I'll try to grab Harold and ask him too, but just wanna make sure that we've got a good spill response plan in place for the town garage, probably for the fire department as well, for any vehicle that has fuel in it. So it sounds like they were siph, somebody was siphoning gas out of, out of a truck. That's what caused the spill, but, but just something that we would like, I, I think we should just.
So how does that work? Philip, you're responsible, so, so if somebody siphons gas out and leaves off.
Well, no, I think it was somebody doing it for maintenance purposes and it leaked out and then it went into a waterway. We would be responsible for cleaning that up. That's, and that's not cheap.
But I would assume our insurance would cover that.
If you got all your eyes, your, all your bells and whistles, like, do you have a response plan? Well, yeah, we do. Oh, okay, then we'll help cover it.
But the other thing is, is that it's, it's under a huge, you know, five hundred gallons or whatever that the trucks carry and so on and so forth. So generally, it wouldn't be a major thing.
Still, I think it's something that we probably want to.
Yeah, that's not a bad.
Have a mitigation plan.
Okay, look into that.
I'll, I'll talk to Harold.
Okay, sounds good. Um, so that's what I had. Treasure.
Okay, um, I gave you budgets and department heads all have budgets and they're, we're at twenty-five percent. So you can look at them and we can review it next meeting.
Okay.
Um, the appointment letters have all been sent out and I've got a great response back. There's still a few that, um, that I'm waiting to hear on. Ken Murray, as a fence viewer, said no. Just not interested, so we need to find another. So now, um.
Who was that? So it was Ken and who?
I can bring my whole list up here.
Charlie Frost?
I think so. Maybe one, was it Rickar?
I don't.
Oh, Penny Rickar and.
Charles Frost, isn't it?
Well, they might be the Woodlumber.
I think they said yes.
All right, we'll mull that over, bring it up next time.
So we need to find another one and then Inspector of Woodlumber and Shingles, Kent Rickar hasn't responded.
Also remember, some of those aren't.
Necessarily regarding their own area of type of position.
Um, where.
Isn't that, if they don't hear back in five days, they.
They don't, they, oh, they, well, we, we send a letter now and they get a more formal yes or no.
Oh, okay.
So, no.
Maybe some of those, I don't know, but some of those guys that have had that position for twenty years might go, oh, I don't need to send that back. They just give it to me automatically, so.
All right, and where Cole, I haven't heard back from Frank, but I haven't seen him to ask him either. Um, and then Fall Foliage Coordinator, prospects, I know Zach, you said you wanted to be on the committee, but have you thought about anybody I can send a letter to and we could develop a little description of what the ideas are? That's just something to ponder.
Yeah, I've talked to a couple people. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
We've had that, that's on the website and posted at the library and here too.
Yep.
Um, the next thing I, I left on your desk was policies. Um, we have like eight more to go through. So I was thinking, try to go through four at the next meeting and four at the next meeting and be done with it.
Yep.
And then the next time would be starting to go through the employee policy, which would, we may have to do that in sections as well.
Okay.
These are policies that we already have.
Yes, yeah, they just need to be reviewed and see if anything's updated.
Yeah.
Nope. So you wanna look at the next, well, the fourth top of this list at the next meeting?
Sure, that would, do you agree with that?
To our agenda for next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like a fun one. Four pol, I don't know, we'll review policies for next.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, we've heard back from the, our new town audit firm. Um, they're gonna come May second and third to the office and do field work, so.
Okay.
We'll be all involved in that. Um, so the library wants me to, we withdrew ten thousand dollars from their, their CD and they want me to open an I bond like I did last fall. Um, so I just would like your blessing to do that before I do it, because in my job description it says, any new accounts, I need the select board's blessing, so.
Says blessing, really?
It doesn't say blessing, but just approval. I don't think it really needs a motion on library or cemetery, but I just don't wanna open an account without you being aware and letting.
Well, it's just taking money from their CD and budgeting an I bond, right?
Right, and earning better interest, so.
Sounds like a fine idea, would've been.
The trustees all signed and everything, I just like.
Yeah, if the trustees are in agreement on it, then we're good with that.
Okay, all right, I just wanna ask, I don't wanna do it without you knowing.
Yep.
Um, so I don't know if you guys have all signed in at the VLCT municipal access portal, you.
No.
So you should be, you should be.
It doesn't matter, because once you sign in, they still send you emails every day reminding you to sign in, so.
All right, all right, I just put it out there.
You get the same amount of emails that we sign in and all, okay.
I.
What about, what about the community bank?
I just gave you, I just gave you a current reserve.
Okay.
So you guys know what money we have and, and, yeah, that's for March, through March. I just thought, every once, not every month, but every few months, I try to give it to you.
That's good.
So you know.
And, um, well, I was gonna ask you, any red flags on the twenty-five percent?
I really haven't, I really haven't looked at. I thought we'd go over it next meeting.
Okay, yep, perfect.
And then I have stuff at maintenance and things, but that's it for treasure.
Okay, thank you. Clerk.
So we finished the licensing of the dogs for the due date with a hundred and eighty-nine dogs.
Where's that compared to last year, at the deadline?
We're way ahead of last year.
I was, we're way ahead, but I'm just curious as to where.
Well, I mean, there's roughly three hundred dogs that we know of that were registered last year.
That were registered last year.
Some people, some people send things back saying they didn't have.
Yeah, I mean, even on the list of dogs, there's dogs that have died, dogs, people have moved or the dog has moved, so.
I know it was in the town report, but does it make sense for us to send out, do, send out like a half-page flyer to all the addresses in town, just as a reminder of the mandatory requirement to register your dog?
As of May, what, end of April, right, we're gonna be sending out?
Yeah, so now.
Yeah, that's right.
Now it's, you know, a higher rate come May first, it's even higher rate than May thirtieth with the deadline. So there were some people today that I went through that I had email addresses for, just randomly from whatever reason, in my email contacts, so they all got just a reminder email and I already heard back from three of them, you know, two hours that it's been since I sent it, so hopefully that's, get those people on the ball. Um, so like we said, roughly it's about a hundred and thirty.
Missing.
Missing, which there's one owner with thirty dogs, so.
But I just, the only, now that I think about what I was thinking about, what about those people that may have gotten a dog in the last year and don't know, or, you know, other than.
Well, we wouldn't necessarily know who they were either.
I mean, I wouldn't know who those people are myself.
That's why, that's why I was suggesting, yeah, me and everybody.
It's an expense, and I don't know if you'd recoup it in the dog licenses.
Put it on the Facebook.
Between the website, Facebook.
Which now it's what, up five dollars, right?
Yeah.
It's half the price, so five bucks for neutered and seven more dollars, fifteen and twenty-one.
So I guess, yeah, it doesn't make sense.
It's on the sign every day for a month, it's been.
I like the idea.
Right, so, okay, we're working, we're gonna keep working on it and we're gonna get to the bottom of this.
Okay, so.
We just can't do it today.
Did have someone come in to talk about this time of year with bears getting into trash, so just a reminder of people's, where they put their trash. Sometimes it's strewn all over the neighbor's yard.
All those suckers.
So, that was one little thing. So we have a request for the use of the community building for both, for both days of the weekend for Jazzy's Children's Fund, and they are wondering what sort of fee we would like to charge them.
So, uh, I think the policy is that we're, for multi-day events, well, the charge that's been suggested for the community club is a hundred dollars, unless, I mean, again, unless they submit.
Submit, or somebody comes and.
And requests to waive the fee. I mean, I mean, again, that's part of the policy, if somebody wants to have that fee waived for an event and they have a good cause and they wanna bring it.
To the board.
Select board.
Right.
We'd be happy to entertain that.
They can come in, so it's cold-hearted sons of guns on the select board, that's okay.
All right, so that one.
I told her we had a meeting, so I would just say it just.
I think that's, yeah.
So, yeah, either, you know, a written request, you know, to the select board or come to the select board meeting, either way.
Okay, and that's really all I have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Carrie. Assistant assessor.
Okay, so you have papers from.
We do, somewhere.
There's a bill, there's a bill that's going through, it's been passed by the House, um, it was passed on March thirtieth. It's, um, it's H four eighty and pretty much, I listened to the, a part of the House, um, when they were debating it, and it's, it's really kinda being pushed through.
Okay.
Um, and what it's gonna allow to is a PBR, um, on the page it's got the red, the red print, PBR taking responsibility, part of the, for H four eighty, do not support, PBR taking responsibility of contracting or conducting property reappraisals, before the department is undertaking its study and implementation plan deliverable supporting back to the legislature, removing the ownership of the grandest from the municipality to the state. So what this bill says is that, at the end of the day, the state's gonna come in and do all the reappraisals, and then they're gonna say to the listers and the assessors, if any of us are left and not PO because they've done this, here, you, you support this with the taxpayers.
So who's gonna find, so they're gonna pay, so they're gonna, they're gonna pick up the bill?
They're gonna do it all.
Okay.
They don't have the staff to do it.
That's good.
They don't have the staff to support us on a daily basis as it stands right now. Part of the problem is that so many, with the, with all the reappraisals that need to be done right now, there's no company or companies that can come in and say, okay, we're gonna do, you know, a hundred and twenty reappraisals. So this bill is trying to get everybody on the, supposedly everybody on the same page and all the reappraisals done in the same way, but it's, it's gonna take a lot of the, it's gonna take all of the control away from the town and the local assessors and listers that know the town and know the properties, and it's gonna be a state, state thing.
I don't see how they even pull it off, 'cause staffing alone, they're never gonna be able to.
One of the big questions is that if the state is one of the, if the state is doing the reappraisal, they're part of the process of justifying that. If you don't, if you don't like what the BCA does, then you go to the state and the state, we have, you have a state person that comes in and is kind of a judge for what's going on. Well, how is that gonna work if the state has already done the reappraisal? So, um, then at the bottom, so at the bottom of that page, there's questions and concerns which are, and I'm not gonna read all the street, but it's, it's very farfetched and it's very, um, a lot of the people, one of the, one of the, one of the people that is pushing this is, I think it's a legislator from, from Middlebury, and one of her concerns was.
So what do we need to do, Doris? What do we need to do? Or what can we do?
I think what we need to do is maybe send a letter to Senator Kinsel, it's going to Senate now. I was amazed it got passed in the House of Representatives.
Okay, 'cause this, I see it's three years, everything's three years, this would happen in three years.
This, this one that's got the purple and the red is the opinion on the dates. Um, it's, it's very complicated, but it's getting pushed through, and the lady in Middlebury, quite a lot of her things was.
So, so, so can you draft a letter? Can you draft a letter and we'll send the letter?
Okay, okay, um, it's in the, it's in the Senate Government Operations Committee as of today. And then Senate, then it's sort of the Senate Finance. It just really got pushed through. They put a lot about it on, on the internet and people talking about it and I had, I had a lot, I had a lot of other things this time of year. It's hardly been paid, it's really paying attention, but then all of a sudden, it's like, oh, it's gonna be voted on today, and.
So it's in committee now, is, I mean.
It's in a Senate committee, it's already been passed by the House.
Gotcha. So let's, let's get a letter and draft a letter?
I might actually look to see when there's, when there's time for testimony. So my, my personal feeling about this is a couple things. One, um, we, a town that's been on top of our property assessments and appraisals for a number of years, are being punished because other towns in the state aren't compliant with specifications that they need to be compliant on. My other part of that is, is if the state's gonna come in here and do this, they should be doing their properties first.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Then if they're gonna come in here as a state and tell us how to run our appraisal process, they should be reappraising state-owned property in the towns, because honestly, what they pay to the state or to the town of Grotton right now is atrocious compared to what that property value is probably worth.
They pay what it's worth, we could hire a healthcare.
We could build a pound, build a new fire department, you know, like, it's not, it's grossly unfair of the state to step in on this type of an issue, um, when what they should be doing is asking towns that are not compliant with their reappraisal statuses, where, why are you not complying?
I don't think it should go too far, 'cause there's no way they can staff to do all of it, so.
And the other thing.
That doesn't stop them.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, so it'll never happen because they can't get.
It doesn't make, it doesn't pass a common sense test, which would, which what makes me fear.
So let's do a letter and let's do what we can do.
Okay.
Let's see if we can do what.
The other thing that'll happen is that they're gonna take away the eight fifty per person, that they're giving us now to do reappraisal.
Okay.
So one of the questions, which was a really good question, was, well, the towns that haven't reappraised for fourteen years, are you gonna go and recoup that money?
No. Well, yeah, I mean, honestly, what they should do is they should find those towns in an amount that's similar to that partial over the course of years. That should be what they should do. We're gonna find you eight dollars and fifty cents a partial times fourteen years, because that's what you have been given to pay for this and you're not using it for that.
You have to use it.
You know, 'cause that, and again, that's, that's mismanagement of funds on those towns. We don't do that, right? We, we're using those funds appropriately and doing what we should be doing.
Okay, so I'll try to get the letter and, and get, and let you folks know so you can come in and sign.
Absolutely. How's everything else going?
Everything else is good. We're past April first, so the bill is billed.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Doris.
Thank you, Doris. Fast squad, fire, ambulance, Brenda.
I have a news from the back of the room.
Okay, that would be good, which I've read your emails and so on and so forth, and so I have an idea what's going on and you guys probably have seen that, but we don't know really what's going on, so.
So we don't relate either, as a fast squad. What we know right now is that their medical director had quit. Um, I, I don't know what prompted it, I can assume, but that's my assumption.
Who is that guy?
No, so their medical director was actually a doctor at college.
Oh.
So this is Woodville? Woodville, yes.
Woodville, yes. Oh, so, okay, but Guy runs it, right?
So Dick Guy is the unofficial director right now, 'cause they don't have a director.
Okay.
Um, Kevin Shelton, who is on the board, is technically the director.
Okay.
But doesn't know anything about EMS. Admittedly, he'll tell you, I don't know anything about EMS, I don't know anything about running an ambulance service, I know how to run a company.
Okay.
So he is leaving all of the medical decisions up to Dick Guy, who's also a member of our department.
Great.
They cannot legally run without a medical director. They temporarily have a burden to issue. That person has decided, okay, I'll come back, we'll see how it goes. We're not confident that this is resolved.
But, but what other options are there?
So that is the issue. We don't have good viable options. Um, we got copies of some contracts from Calis, so Danville has, their per capita is close to what ours is. Um, their contract is about half of the contract that we got from Woodville per capita. As you know, ours went up fifty percent issue.
But this isn't the only one. There was another town, Essex or something, and so.
All towns are increasing because they can't staff and leave, you know, all the things, that's all. As, logistically, where we're located, we don't have good options. Uh, Bear Town, to get to Grotton Village is approximately thirty minutes, and that's to the village. That's not out to the lake. That's, they, they wouldn't cover Ride Lake. Um, to get to Ride Lake, Calis is approximately thirty-five minutes to some areas of Ride Lake, so we don't have.
So what's the option? So what's, so what do you do? So even if we call in Woodville ambulance and say, hey, tell us why and what's the deal and whatever, what are they gonna say?
So I think that we would like some assurances that they're not gonna just button up their doors.
Okay.
They do have someone that will step into the medical director position for a short time if things explode again, um, but that's a temporary fix. It's a band-aid. It's just another band-aid. But we didn't want you guys to be all of a sudden blunt-sided.
So what can we do as the board to help?
So I, we would like to have Dick Guy and Kevin Shelton meet with the board.
Okay.
At least give some kind of assurances that for your fifty percent increase.
Yeah, what do we get?
This is what we're, this is what we're gonna guarantee to you. And we understand that there's gonna be time for it to go, if an ambulance is available. It's just the nature of, I think, probably four or five times a year, we have to call Bear Town. Even if we cancel them, because Woodville all has an ambulance that comes free, um, we understand that sometimes it's not always, we have too many calls at once. But we would like some kind of guarantees for what we're paying. We're paying a premium, but what's our service guarantee?
Yeah, I agree. What do you guys say? I, I agree. That's, that sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, sounds like a fine idea.
So let's line up, let's line up with them to come to a meeting.
Okay, thank you, Dick and Kevin.
Um, and then just let us know when it will work.
Yeah, I mean, they, you know, Dick does know our concerns and have quite a few conversations with them. What he's telling me now is just stay the course and see where it goes. I can't really do that.
Okay, yeah.
We have an obligation to the town.
Right, okay. No, it sounds good. It's kinda scary to think that we wouldn't have them or we don't have any other options, because.
Our options are great, and, and Woodville have, they are talking about kind of regional coverage with Upper Valley, which is out of Bradford. Again, not reasonable options for us, so.
I'm gonna ask a dumb question, but we can't have our own ambulance, like, as part of the fast squad, we can't have our own ambulance.
We would have to completely re-license, restructure, like, just a humongous expense. I mean, you're talking about between a quarter of a million and a half a million dollars to start.
Now, why doesn't like a private, can a private person do an ambulance facility per se and service the community and blah, blah, blah?
That's, that's what the Jones do.
But you gotta, you gotta be able to.
No, I just, I'm just, you know, it depends on how, how that ultimately works.
So I mean, you could, if you could find a private ambulance service, but as rural as we are, there's really no money in it for that. You know, private ambulance services are in the city. They're not.
Right.
Generally rural, you know, and we're not a tran. And we're not a transport service. That's a whole other issue.
Well, I mean, it's kind of a serious, serious thing. But, you know, between two towns and if we could get together and somehow have a system if we couldn't... We don't want a system as far as I'm concerned. We want Woodville to do what they're supposed to do and...
We want someone to be able to cover our townspeople. You know, Derek and I have beat this to death. What are our options? We really don't have a place to have, say, Calis. Put an ambulance in town. You have to have some place for them to sleep, eat, house their trucks, staff. We don't have accommodation like that. You know? They have Danville. They have their Calis West station in Danville. They don't have enough staff to manage.
Right.
So...
Jeez, I have a nice place. They could get a lot of ambulances in there and suite rooms. We could hang out the boat and we'd be great. All the ladies! The boat's going to be there!
You don't mind not having your own women or men in our... So we talked about...
No!
And Bear Town is about, their per capita is higher because we talked about them as well. Their per capita is higher than Woodville's right now. So we don't have great options, but at least if we could get...
I wouldn't even want to have to come here from Barry the way the roads are right now anyway sometimes.
We had to do it, and I have to tell you, I waited 45, 50 minutes for an ambulance from Bear Town.
I've waited in Silver Ridgate for an ambulance to come out of Upper Valley. And I think they were half an hour away. They were half an hour en route and Woodville got on the radio and said, well, we're clear. We'll go take that call.
Yeah, which happens. And, you know, they get it, but still...
Well, let's start by having a meeting, I guess, and see what we get out of the meeting and then go from there.
I mean, I think, you know, to point out, you know, this is one of you guys that said the thing with Essex. It's, this isn't our problem, unique in this area. You know, it's a greater problem.
Yeah, because on the news, they were having a fit. They're like, well, you need to come and tell us why, why, and what's the increase? Which I think it comes down to personnel, most of it, isn't it? They're trying to get people to work.
So when you can go and get a job at McDonald's for the same amount that an EMT gets paid...
Yeah, it makes sense.
That's part of hell to swallow because we train a lot.
And you're on call all night and day and...
And not just that, but, you know, I know sort of indirectly, like, places like Darmstadt, you get somebody that's EMT qualified and they're going to pay them a lot of money to go work in the emergency room there because they can use that person doing that.
They have a medical license.
Yeah, we have someone that's on the department that works at NDRH. She is an EMT with a couple of other classes under his belt. He can't afford to go work at Woodville anymore.
Right.
Because he makes...
He makes a lot of money.
Well, he's what he's mostly paying. So it is staffing issues that are driving some of the prices up, and I completely get that.
Which we get it, but...
But what if, if I'm going to pay for a premium service, I want to know what to expect.
Okay, let's find out.
Cool.
Okay.
Try to work out a date.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Is that it for fire? Do we have any fire updates? Does anybody?
No firefighters in the room speaking up, so...
What? Nope.
Okay, so I'll take that as everything's good on the fire department.
I do believe so. But stay a fire beach as fire school is coming up in May, so...
Okay, good.
Six and seven, B and U, show your faces. Sign up.
Okay. Thank you, Constable. I know Mark is on a trip back here.
Do you want me to cover the speed sign stuff?
Oh, yeah, that's, well, yeah, that's fine.
Let me do that. Constable? Okay. So I talked to Sheriff Heeman today, and he is working through the details to get the mobile speed limit sign that he's got placed in town, in the village. As long as it's in the village, it's acceptable. If it's out of the village limits, they can't do it. It's, you know, they can't do it with state regulations. But, so anyway, he's planning to have it here, hopefully on Monday. Be here for two weeks. One week facing east, one week facing west. I also talked to him about speed study stuff, and he said that that does record the speed limit information. It doesn't record, it doesn't record license plates or anything like that. It just, you know, records the speeds and the times that, you know, times that they're collected. And he said that that can be used as a speed study, so we'll do that. And then, you know, I did talk to him too about having it out later in the summer too, you know? Now's a good time as things are kind of, the weather's kind of changing. But when we start to see all of our out-of-towners come in for camping and otherwise, it'd be good to have them out there too, so...
Good. Anyway, does he have, you know where he can put them? Where does he...
Yeah, he's going to figure out where to put all.
Very good.
I didn't, I just told him somewhere in the village on either way.
Okay, good.
So we'll see.
That's good. Well, hopefully we can keep, because we really, that'd be great if we can get this moving ahead and get some...
Get some traction with them.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So he seemed all for it, so it's good.
Good. Thank you, Mark.
Do you want to give us exact names or do you want to speak to everybody?
Oh, yeah. I speak to the library.
Library.
They got a lot of cool stuff going on.
That was good. Thank you.
Yep, no, this last weekend, they were busy. So they had about 70 participants that showed up to the Jazzy's Easter egg hunt and crafts day. And then on Sunday, I was there all day because my son was going through hunter safety. But big, big thank you to Gay Morden Michael Scott and Gay Morden Will Seager, who both gave up 12 hours of their Sunday to educate youngsters on hunter safety. And they had 15 program registrants, all 15 passed. So we've got another 15 registered hunters, you know, registered hunters. And so it turned out really great. But they got some upcoming events too. So there's movie night this Friday to get into the baseball theme. They're going to watch the Sandlot. They're going to do some stuff later in the month for Earth Day. And working on a few other pretty awesome things that they've got going on. The only other thing I wanted to add with the library is Deb Juris emailed me kind of an update on the Rural Edge Grant Proposal that they're working on. It's a really good, it's a really good, it's a really good grant project. It's going to fix a lot of the needs of the building infrastructure specifically. So it should be pretty good.
Good.
The biggest thing that I think is a concern from Rural Edge is just that the day after they finish all that work with that grant, that we don't go, hey, we want this building back now. Which, I don't, talking with, you know, with Deb, and that's not something that we're ready to do. So I think there's a lot more that needs to be done to be able to get to that point. But this is a great step in, you know, getting, getting that property fixed up and keeping the library there, so...
You mean like all the shingles that are falling off all the buildings?
Yeah.
Library building anyways.
No, they're on rolling. They're looking at, you know, fixing some of the heating issues, fixing some of the other, there's a few other issues with windows and other things that they're going to get addressed, but...
Good.
There's, um...
So anyway.
Good.
There's smoke alarm issues throughout the whole building too.
I think that's on the list.
I hope so. We have the same issue here. Okay, good. Thank you. Zoning Administrator, Dan?
I've got something I want to hand out to you guys to just take a look at. The Planning Commission is working on this.
Okay.
It's a nuisance structure thing that's out of Londonville. They might leave the cities and towns, put it together. It's pretty comprehensive.
Okay.
It's really good. I think the Planning Commission would like to change a couple of things in it as far as number of people being building inspectors.
Okay.
Those who are five to seven. And have at least two members from the Planning Commission beyond it. But it's very comprehensive. It covers everything.
Okay.
It's not a junk ordinance. We are going to start working on one of those also.
Good, because we talked about...
We talked about that, but if we can get this started, and it's a process, then it's good.
No, this is really good. And then, does this cover burnt-down?
Yes.
Buildings as well?
Yes, torn-down buildings, that taken care of. It covers all that.
Oh, great. This is good.
Remedial way you can take and recoup money and things.
Good.
So I think the biggest thing is making sure that we have a process that's going to, you know, this has civil penalties in it, which is good.
Right.
Because, you know, the state has regulations around nuisance properties, especially burnt-down properties.
Yes.
And I know we haven't been really compliant with that. Part of that's because we just don't have manpower. Well, that, there's no ordinance and teeth behind it.
We don't have an ordinance that has the teeth for us to follow through. That's it for planning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, so Health Officer, Dan?
Had our first dog situation. Dog took down a 10-year-old girl back here in Baruch, Beth. Mark Puffer and I took him, did the investigation, went through it. I filed a file, paid for it through the state. I filed a report for you guys. The dog's a Great Dane. The girl was 10 years old and about this tall. His bite radius was eight and a half inches.
But it didn't break the skin?
It didn't break the skin. He broke two places on the sweatshirt where he grabbed and dragged her down. The second time he grabbed her and dragged her, the owner got a hold of him and pulled the dog off her. And then, of course, when I was talking with the owner, he was very belligerent as to the fact that the dog wasn't the issue. But anyways, we took care of it. We had the report. And that's it on that.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Maintenance?
Last year, chimney savers came and did maintenance on our chimney. And they had given us a quote for $990. And I told them they had to wait until the budget passed.
What was it last year? Do you know?
No, that's the quote. They honored the same price.
Oh, it's the same price. It's a quote for this year, but it's the same price as last year.
Yeah, they redid it and put a new date on it.
Is that something we have to have done every year?
No, there's some repairs that maybe Aaron understands.
I think when he was cleaning, he saw something.
He noticed these few things that need to be done.
So this, okay, so...
Did I say it wrong?
Yeah, well, maybe I misunderstood. So they came and cleaned it last year, and then they gave us an estimate this year to do some fixing up on it.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's fine. No, I just, I was thinking they were going to come clean it again.
So I just need to know if you want me to move forward with this?
I move forward with it, yeah. I mean, we were just paid to get that chimney put in eight years ago, whatever it was.
We should definitely make sure we keep it up.
And, yeah, I mean, well, you look at it, it's not any, they're not replacing windshield wiper fluid for us, so... Looks like legit stuff.
Muffler bearing.
Yeah, it looks like legit stuff they're asking for, so...
And it's, you know, it's only a thousand bucks, basically. So that's not bad.
But what are they doing? Like, what? It's like, it looks like there's some flashing on top.
Some flashing.
So they need to set up scaffolding and go all the way up and brush the chimney out, disconnect the boilers, replace them, turn them back on.
And they're going to straighten out the exterior of it. They're going to, yeah, they're going to...
Is this something I can look at?
I think it's definitely good to keep it up yet because if we don't, maybe next year it'll be $2,000.
Yeah.
Okay, so take care of that. And just wanted to let you know that Mark Puffer said he would start testing the fire extinguishers, and he started, so he's doing those for us.
Perfect. Good. Is that it for maintenance?
That's all I have.
Okay, good. How about IT?
Just one, I got, talking with Sarah at the library. The library is looking at improving their Wi-Fi connectivity at the library. But there, we kind of opened up a bigger discussion about trying to expand Wi-Fi into the gazebo area and get more Wi-Fi coverage in the village. And so...
How far does their hotspot rate?
Just, it really is like those first two...
Can you put a reflector thing, like a thing that matches the dog?
Yeah, so we were, she's looking into it, but I said that, you know, I would be happy to work with her on, you know, how we can help with that cost, potentially to help with...
What does something like that cost? Does anybody know?
She said it probably, well, her husband's in IT, and she said probably somewhere in the $2,000 to $3,000 range altogether.
Oh, Jesus. It's a lot more than I thought it would be.
Well, but in the library, the friends of the library are going to work to pay to improve the Wi-Fi, it sounds like, at the library building. But, I mean, it doesn't hurt to have better Wi-Fi coverage downtown than the park area and otherwise, so...
Okay. Sounds good. It's a lot of money. It's a lot more. I was thinking a couple hundred bucks or something that'd go out there. But the other thing on that whole discussion is we need to figure out the light situation in the park with Tim and figure out, because the time changed. So we need it, like, it's going to stay light till nine o'clock at night and it's coming on at 5:00. So we got to, who's going to, we got to figure out...
I think he was planning to come back in the spring, but we can reach out to him.
Okay.
You know, once, like you say, the light situation changes.
Yeah, so then I don't know what, what we would, if it stays late till nine o'clock at night, do we keep it on till midnight from nine till mid, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know what the schedule...
Yeah, nine to 11:00, I would say probably discourage people from shooting hoops at midnight.
I would say...
Hoops are usually scary.
Yeah.
I'd say, well, a little later than 10:00 p.m. on, you know, any of that stuff anyway, right?
But I mean, it's a noisy one.
If it's light till 9:00.
Nine.
Don't even have them. For a couple of weeks, and that's all.
Right. Okay, so anyways, I guess we should...
Certainly don't need to come on at 4:30, 5:00.
No.
Yeah.
No.
So that'd be good. Okay. All right, good. So Planning Commission. Anything on the Command and Planning Commission?
I think you...
Yeah, right.
Theztrope Administrator covered it.
NEK, CUD, fork, up things.
Moving forward. They've, I don't know if we talked last time, they're putting the cement now. It's not going to be right tight. It's going to be past the solar panels, down further.
It's all the way to the bottom.
Okay.
So that'll be different. So they put that, they put the permit in.
It's the next day. They're going to start the level.
Oh, wow.
Putting the bases in.
Jesus.
Okay.
Isn't that bad?
Yeah.
You need to.
Starting projects, this, we haven't heard from the archaeological, no, that's April.
No.
No.
I've listened to a lot of emails, but.
But before we go on to that, I think the size of that was a little different than what we had planned. It's like big and then.
Yeah, what happened is that the original spot that they had planned for it was up by the first set of panels. Well, they sent us in the permit for the original size that they had talked about when we did the walk around.
Which isn't.
Which isn't anything.
Near, wasn't.
Right, so then they had to submit another one. There wasn't enough room in that area. So they had to move it down. Because they couldn't get the trucks to service the solar panels if they had something that big where they originally.
Right, makes sense, yeah.
So they moved it down and it is larger. It's, it's going to be 26 feet long. Yeah.
That thing, before they get done, it'll be 50 feet long.
I hope so. I'll give you the permit.
Okay.
Well, it's kind of tough. It sounds like it's more tucked out of sight now anyways down there.
Yeah.
So that's good.
And it's not very tall. It's just big.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Infrastructure updates, which you, which.
I haven't been able to keep up with the emails.
All right, I have a few things. Um, Nate from Ruggles, um, prepared the final plans and we.
Brought them down.
They're in the back table. And then he sent them to USDA. They have to do their final review, so hopefully that doesn't take that long and hopefully there's no changes.
Yep.
Um, the, so he sent 287 pages. I printed them.
That's what was up on the desk?
That's there, so please take a look, but I'd rather, if you take it, just bring it back because I don't want to print it again.
Bring it in.
So, um, I tried to figure out like timelines, how things were going, and I couldn't find timelines in there. So I asked Nate and he said it's really, um, like a four-week project. It's like four weeks worth of work, but it'll probably take two months or, I say, Grotten time, four months. But, you know, it's just, but not as long as I thought. I thought it was going to be two years, honestly. I mean, I just had no idea.
It's going to be torn up for two years?
I didn't know. I just, that was kind of, um, optimistic, but. So, and Nate, um, also sent the documents that he needed for Gavin to do the easements. So Gavin called me today and said he is working on the easements for Mill Street. So that sounds good. We did, um, the USDA compliance review, um, but Zach and I submitted in March.
Other than his questions that he sent back?
Yeah, I, I sent, we did a couple of them and sent them and I haven't heard anything back.
Okay, perfect, so it must be.
I hope and it's okay.
I'm assuming so. It was, that some of that was a little bit.
Confusing.
Well, not just confusing, but that, you know, tracking, tracking services, you know, for, for compliance with, you know.
A municipality, not a business.
Yeah, which is fine, but like, and they, it, it also was kind of hazy because it was the project not necessarily, because it's a parking lot, we're not doing anything.
To the building.
And it's, just making sure that there's equal access to the government, basically, is what it came down to, but anyway, that's good.
So that's it. Sounds like everything's moving forward. Nate just wants me to let him know when the snow's gone down the field and I don't think it's gone yet.
Which is kind of exciting because hopefully we can get everything together by fall to put it out and.
It would be done next year probably.
Yeah.
At this point, first thing, it'd be great to try to get it, but we're already pushing.
Fall foliage, it can't be, you know, it has to be done, so there's no way.
It's exciting that it's going forward.
Somebody's got to go dig in there, like the pottery sheriff, Arrowheads over there anyways, before anything happens.
Hey, you never know. Dartmouth College just had a big mine.
Did they?
Yeah, they were doing an excavation for something and they found something up on their property.
Yeah.
Anyway.
That's always been a good place to be.
Good.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, the, the question would be, you know, do we want to at this point, I guess, hold off and not put it to bed till next year or?
I would say.
I was going to ask Nate.
I think we're not quite there yet. Let's wait.
Yeah, let's wait till we see where we get.
USDA might come back with something, yeah, still.
Well, we're going to come back and go, hey, it's time to put this out the bin now.
Yep.
We may have to put it out the bin when they, when they say, yeah, this is the point to do it.
And I really, Nate really knows what he's doing, so I really have a lot of faith in.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, fantastic work for us, so that's really, he's, he's a good person to be working with.
Good. All right, excellent. Policy updates, we already talked about that.
Yeah, I didn't know where to put it, so I just stuck it there.
That's fine, yeah. Uh, that's all good. Open to the public.
I have one thing. So the alarm in the gym, did that ever get fixed?
The copper owner?
The whole thing is off.
No, I haven't done anything to it.
Have we done anything with the cages on the lights?
Cages, no.
No.
Those need to get done too.
Cages on the lights and that one, that one smoke alarm needs to go back on.
Can we get ahold of Ben and see if, can Ben come, can we get those cages put on?
I need two people for that. That's that giant ladder.
Well, I don't know. I'm just saying, we, can we get somebody to come?
Ben's going to need help moving that ladder, please.
Maybe Mark.
Yeah, but Tom, we might have Tom help him or something. I don't know. I don't know. Who can we, who can?
Maybe Mark.
Do, do that.
Yeah, we just, we just see who, see who was, who's available.
Thank you, Brendan Schubert.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, so, yeah, but.
Well, that one, you know, it can't be reached, so that's why I was wondering if someone can just go in and pop it back on. And I think when Mike Davidson tried it with Taekwondo, he set all of them off and panicked and undid it, but I think it would time through.
Resets itself, yeah.
I think.
Okay.
I think they all alarm because something got changed and rehooked up.
So what, so what did, so did, I mean.
I think it'd probably be a good idea to go over, look at it next Tuesday. We got the double fire department over there.
Yeah, because it's too high to read. Need a little step ladder.
Oh, good fire department. Actually, I like this.
Okay, damn it, I was looking at you to remind me on Tuesday.
Okay, so. Fire Department, Fire Department will take care of it.
Yeah, I'll go over on Tuesday and look at it.
All right, that sounds great. And then we'll just, if you wouldn't mind reaching out to Ben or somebody and seeing if we can get those cages put back up on before something happens?
Yes.
That'd be awesome. Okay, cool. Any other public business? Okay, follow-ups. Speed sign, we already talked about. Fire alarms, we've pretty much covered. Any more update on?
I don't have anything. I, last couple of weeks, I've been working on my EMT license.
Um.
So are you, wait, sorry, are you still, you just said something about the speed sign taken off, but we're still looking at trying to move the other ones?
Yes, yeah, okay, we can leave that on there.
Sorry.
So, and I have, we got something.
Sue, yes.
I have one thing on the Japanese knotweed. I reached out to Gavin and I left him a message, but he's never returned my message about, or discussion about whether we were posting the.
With their name.
Doing the, the stuff.
Town of Grotten.
Town knotweed stuff, so.
The, the library is doing, uh, with that, occasion on that in June, so.
Okay, so I, yeah, I'm just saying, Gavin's never called me back or whatever, so, uh, that's what I had on that. Set the, uh, set the alarm, set the agenda for, uh, next meeting, so I'd say it pretty much stays. Yeah, we could move policy updates up into our something else though, right?
I think we, we move it up ahead of.
Up to the top?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, let's do that.
That should be pretty, pretty.
You want cemetery on department updates or you think you'll be all set for?
I look for you, bud.
No.